All right, thank you, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this August 22, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We don't have any announcements or proclamations tonight, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we're going to start with an invocation from Andy Gualtney. And then afterwards, we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Camden Smith from Troop 79, which is the All Saints troop. He's here for his citizenship in the community merit badge. So Camden, if you want to come on up, come on up and you can stand up at the podium, near the podium, and then that way you'll be ready once we finish the invocation. If everyone will please stand.
As you would, bow your heads. Dear God, thank you for your amazing power and work in our lives. Thank you for the goodness that you bring and the blessings that you bestow upon us. Be with us this evening as we prepare to spend time serving those in this room, in this community, and throughout our neighborhoods. Thank you that you can bring hope, even in the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. Thank you for your great love and care. Lord, thank you for your mercy and grace, and that you are always with us and that you will never leave us. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice that you have given to us so that we might have the freedom and life. Lord, be with us this evening. Help us make good and wise decisions, renew our spirits, and fill us with peace and joy. We love you, we need you, this day and every day. We give you praise and thanks. Be with us as we walk the path in which you lead us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Gualtney. Camden, you're up.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Camden. We appreciate it. Ms. Salter, if you'll please call roll.
Councilor Gualtney?
Here.
Councilor Gier?
Here.
Councilor Alamon?
Just here.
Councilor Wolverton?
Here.
Councilor Sims?
Here.
Councilor Jones?
Here.
Councilor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Nels?
Here.
Councilor Andres?
Here.
Councilor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Everybody's here, and let's know that it's going to be budgeted last night. You have a call.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our meeting of July 8, 2022. Ms. Salter has circulated those earlier this afternoon.
Motion to approve those and dispense with the reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those are approved 11 to 0. All right, next, we have board vacancies, and we've got a few of these. I think we're going to start with the Historic Preservation at Large position. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we would like to appoint Sidney Simmons to that position. Again, we had some great candidates interview, and Ms. Simmons had interviewed previously, and we really would like to take advantage of her financial wizardry. So Sidney Simmons for the at-large position on the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, so we have a second?
Second.
All right, so a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0. Congratulations to Ms. Simmons. Next, we have the Mental Health Authority. That has closed again without an applicant, so we will reopen that to, let's say, September 26 at 4:30. All right, next, we have a couple of beautification board positions. First is an at-large position, and I believe we had one applicant to that. Is that correct, Mr. Sims?
Yes, that is correct.
Is that Nancy Mason?
Yes.
Okay. So that being the only applicant, would that be your motion to appoint her?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Nancy Mason to the Beautification Board at Large position.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Sims, second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and congratulations to Ms. Mason.
I'm sorry? I saw what I was.
Please do, thank you, Ms. Salter. All right, and then Ward 2, we still, we did not get any applicants for that one, so we will reopen that also until September 26 at 4:30.
Yes, sir.
All right. We do have, that's it for board vacancies. Next, we have one addition to the agenda tonight. This will be added to other new business. It is 180822. Request for an event notification letter for the just-a-call-away 5K run. That'll be added to other new business. There are some reasons for the timing of that that we'll go through when we get to the item. With that addition, I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Gualtney, second for Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 11 to 0. We don't have anything on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to old business. First item, 100522, public hearing set for September 12, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. to consider annexation into the city of Homewood for 314 Happy Lane, brought to us by Catching Properties, Melody Salter, and Robert Brigette. We will carry this item over for that public hearing on September 12. Next item, 090722, bid date set for September 12, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. for Mecca Avenue Sidewalks, brought to us by Kale Smith. This item is still in finance as well, but we will carry it over here for that bid date on the 12th. Next item, 100722, bid date for September 12, 2022, at 4:10 p.m. for Delkris Sidewalks, also brought to us by Kale Smith. Same thing with this one, it's still in finance, but we will carry it over here for that bid date. Next item, 110722, bid date set for September 12, 2022, at 4:20 p.m. for Huntington Stormwater Culvert Replacement, brought to us by Kale Smith. Same thing with this one, it's still in finance, but we will carry it over for that bid opening. We're doing, we're going to carry over lots of stuff tonight. 60822, public hearing set for September 12, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to remove zoning restriction PR2C from 1116 Hollywood Manor Drive. The applicant is Joseph A. Miller III of MTTR Engineers, Inc., in order to permit the construction of a single-family house. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a 7-0 vote in favor of the recommendation. We will carry that item over as well for the 12th. Next item, 080822, public hearing set for September 12, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration for condemnation of the structure at 2562 Eighteenth Street South, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We will carry that item over for the 12th as well. Next item, 150722, public hearing set for November 14, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of annexation for the Board of Education property into the city of Homewood, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. We will carry that item over until November 14. All right, 050522, request to set a public hearing for vacation of right-of-way of 16th Street adjacent to 2901 Central Avenue, brought to us by Lee and Chelsea Manscalco and Wyatt Pugh. This one, we are going to set for a public hearing tonight. Mr. Kendrick, how long, for vacation of property, how long do we have to?
Yeah. I wish I'd known you were going to ask.
I'm sorry, I know I sprung that on you. We can...
We have to publish it one time before, 30 days from the date of the public hearing. So I would assume probably give it about 45 days, so we can get it...
So maybe the first meeting in October, October 10th, or we could do October 24th.
We should be able to get it published this month.
Do you live out there, Mr. Garrett?
I've got the notice ready, but I just didn't have the data.
I know, and I should have given you some more.
It's published on Wednesday, so it's...
Okay. Then we'll set that public hearing for October 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
They used to be called, I think we can get it in.
It's published on Wednesday, too.
October 10.
All right, next item, 140722, public hearing set for our last meeting on August 8, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of sign variances at 1722, 27th Court South, brought to us by Dogtopia and Wyatt Pugh. This item, we closed the public hearing last time, but we did carry it over. Do we have, you reported it out last time, do you have any? Okay.
We reported it out without recommendation pending the public.
Sure, okay. All right. Before you start, I do want to let the council know a couple of things. One is that I got an email today from Tim Coker, who said that the sign is coming down this week. They are hoping to have the permits out there tomorrow to start on that. They're doing some other work on the roof. And so certainly, if you have anything new, I'm going to let you say it, but I don't want to cut you off. But I would make this suggestion, if everyone is comfortable with the sign variance that's been requested, is that we could make, someone could make the motion to approve it conditionally upon the property being brought into compliance with, the rest of the property being brought into compliance with our sign ordinance. In other words, it would take, the variance would actually take effect once the poll sign came down. That way, you could go ahead and order it because you would know that it would be approved, you just couldn't put up the sign until the poll sign came down.
Got it.
So with that, if you have anything new?
Nothing new, I mean, I'm happy to refresh everyone's memory, but yeah, nothing new.
I'm happy to make that motion to go ahead and approve it conditionally on the removal of the poll sign.
Second.
All right, motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Andres. Any other questions or comments from council? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
All right, so that is 10 to 0 to 1, and will be Resolution 22133.
Yes, sir.
And just to make sure, that made sense, right?
That made sense.
Fantastic.
Can't go up until the poll signs down.
That's right. Thank you very much. All right, next item, 080722, request for consideration of Shays Creek Parkway Phase 2, brought to us by Kale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, we had minutes from the 1st and the 15th. This particular item was carried over last time, so from our minutes on the August, the first meeting, we voted, after hearing a presentation from GMC, we voted 4 to 0 to recommend accepting the lowest responses bidder, which is Chilton Contractor, and have the mayor sign the contract. The actual amount, just so you're aware, would be, coming out of carryover fund balance, Fund 26-09-499301, going into the Green Springs Phase 2, line item 26-11-581584, and that would be $566,149.34.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 22134. All right, next item, 050722, request for permission to grant Telepac Networks, DBA, Seaspire Fiber, and 18-foot by 18-foot permanent easement, brought to us by Kale Smith. And we'll start with another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This was from our meeting on August 15. The committee met, voted 3 to 0 to approve declaring this surplus and signed the easement agreement with Seaspire. So 3 to 0 out of Finance.
All right, so the way this works is that we first have to declare this land surplus, so that we'll have an ordinance for that, and then we will have a resolution following that. So with regard to the ordinance, Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us the first reading, please.
Yes, there's an order to declare real property a surplus, be ordained by the city. At a regular meeting, newly assembled coin bringing process, President has followed that hereby establish and declare that the real property owned by the C is described below, and it sets out the legal description for that 18 by 18 section. It's no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, therefore declared surplus. Section 2, the mayor and the city clerk authorized and directed to lease the property to Telepac Network, Inc., DBA Seaspire pursuant to the terms and conditions that certain right-of-way easement between the parties, forwarding consideration of the sum of $25,000.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. All right, so that is, this is for the part to declare this surplus, surplus, thank you, I couldn't think of the word.
I'd say move for unanimous consent.
All right, we have, yeah, just a second. We got a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Ms. Smith. Mr. Wolverton, you got a question?
I wasn't here, so excuse me for not knowing, but I just wasn't sure if there was some, I know in the past we've talked about some sort of monetary conditions on something like this.
Yeah, he just read it, $25,000.
$25,000, okay. All right, all right, any other questions or comments before we do that vote? Ms. Salter, if you'll please do a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
All right, yes.
Yes.
All right, so that is 11 to 0, and now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Andres. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nels?
Yes.
Councilor Andres?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes.
That's 2847.
All right, so that is 11 to 0, and then we'll be ordinance 2847. Now we have the resolution to approve. I would entertain a motion and a second for that resolution.
Or does that come out of Finance? Is it?
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
I think we've got, just because, since it wasn't surplus, I'd rather do it separately.
Got it, yeah, yeah, okay.
Ordinarily, yes, that would be fine.
If he made the motion, I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and we'll be Resolution 22135. All right, next item, 010822, request to consider State Act 2022-229 to allow for a one-time bonus for retired Homewood City employees, brought to us by Mayor McCluskey, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so we have 10 to 1, and that will be Resolution 22136. Next item, 020822, request for consideration to become an official Fan Guide sponsor for the annual Birmingham Bowl, brought to us by Mark Meadows and Barry Smith. And another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments?
What's the cost as you look at it?
It's, I believe, $1,881.
$1,181, sorry.
Yeah, $1,181.
I have a...
$1,188, that's right.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
And it's to put our city logo website in the Fan Guide and on the website.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and we'll be Resolution 22137. All right, 030822, request to set a bid date for College Avenue Stormwater Improvements, brought to us by Kale Smith, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 3 to 0 to recommend setting a bid date for September 12 at 4:30 p.m. They'll be due at 4, but they'll be open at 4:30. 3 to 0.
All right, so we will set that bid date for September 12, 2022, which is going to be a busy night, at 6:00 p.m.? Or no, I'm sorry, what time did you say? 4:30?
4:30.
Okay. All right, next item, 040822, request to amend fiscal year 2122 budgets, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, Robert Brigette, Melody Salter, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 22138. Next item, 050822, request to consider revisions to the tree and landscape ordinance, brought to us by Kale Smith, and we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andres?
Yes, the committee voted 4 to 0 to refer revisions back to the full council without recommendation and carry over in committee as well. The motion was made by Councilor Nels, seconded by Councilor Wolverton.
All right, so we left this item in committee, but we sent out the changes to, the amendments to the ordinance to be approved, correct?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, do you have the first reading of the revisions?
Probably, we can set them 26, 27.
Okay. So we'll set that public hearing for September 26.
Yes, sir, there's an order to amend Article 2 entitled Definitions and to amend subsection F entitled Exemptions of Article 11 entitled Tree Protection and Landscape of Article of Appendix A entitled Zoning of the Code of Ordinance of the City. Be ordained by the City Council as follows. Section 1, the Article 2 entitled Definition is amended to add the following definition, is definition for artificial turf. Section 2, the subsection F entitled Exemptions of Article 11 entitled Tree Protection and Landscape of Appendix A is amended to read as follows, sets out section F exemptions. All trees removed by utility country or state agencies which are located within a public road, drainage right-of-way, or permanent utility and drainage easements shall be exempt from the requirements of this article. Section 2, building permits issued for maintenance or interior alterations and renovations where the work is less than 50% of the building area total square footage, all floors, or exterior site improvements less than $5,000 is estimated by the officials and the DEZ shall be exempt from the requirements of this article. Section, subsection 3, in lieu of satisfying requirements for landscaping required by this article, the applicant or homeowner may satisfy the provisions of this article by paying for the city. At the time of the application, a sum equal to $750 for any tree over 25% of the required MTD. For example, if MTD is four, one tree shall be installed, $750 may be paid for the remaining three trees if two trees are required. One tree shall be installed, and $750 may be paid for the remaining tree. The funds shall be paid to the tree replacement fund, which shall be used solely by the city to replant trees in the city. Section 4, all of the provisions of the zoning ordinance remain in full force of the Act. Section 4, September 26, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. is a time and place fixed for the public hearing, at which time all persons may be heard. Section 5, any part of provision or it is declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all of the parts of provisions remain in full force. Section 6, order shall become effective upon its adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayor, or as otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. So that item will be set for a public hearing September 26, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. All right, which brings us to the end of old business agenda and to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Andres, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 11 to 0, which brings us to other new business. First item, 140822, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 207 Mecca Avenue, brought to us by Debbie Petito and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for September 12 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 150822, request to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 327 East Glenwood Drive a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, brought to us by Scott Cook. We will also set that public hearing for September 12 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 160822, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of August 9, 2022, through August 22, 2022, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, is this still Mr. Harden?
It is, I yield to Mr. Harden.
Okay, I apologize for...
We're chatting.
This is, this...
Voucher.
That's right, okay. So I did have a chance to review the vouchers. Mr. Brigette, I sent him an email yesterday, and he replied today, and I'm satisfied with everything. So I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Harden, a second from Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 22139. All right, I'm going to take this next item out of order, so we can leave the mayor for last. That is 180822, request for an event notification letter for just a call-away 5K run. This is a run that is going on around Patriot, in the Patriot Park area, but not on Patriot Park. They had originally been planning to use ASH's ABC license, and obviously cannot do that now. So they are working to get their own special event license from the ABC Board because they are a 501(c)(3), and the Police Department has confirmed that they do not need to, the city doesn't need to do a background check for that license. So what we do need to do, and we've done this once before, is to issue an event notification letter that we will go ahead and give them, and then they can go talk to the ABC Board about whatever they need to do to try to get their special event license. So that's what, that's what this item is. If anyone's got any questions or comments, let me know. If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Andres, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and Ms. Salter will get you that letter. All right, which brings us...
Did you, sorry, did you write down, I missed, I can go back, listen to who did the second on the vouchers, Harden was the first?
Ms. Smith.
Smith, okay, thank you.
All right. I believe that brings us to all but one item tonight, so, Mr. Mayor, we'll turn the show over to you.
Maybe some AC/DC or something cool like that.
Well, that's exactly.
Yeah, there you go.
That was not the one I used that had highway in it, but.
Amen. Speak up.
Well, it's, it's that time again. As you all know, the, the work that goes into a budget is long and arduous, and there are so many moving parts, and, but that's, the goal is to bring you a sustainable and balanced budget. So I have to say thanks to several people for their hard work, or we wouldn't be here tonight. I want to thank all of my department heads, first of all, for their determination and thoughtfulness in submitting their proposals. Those city leaders worked very hard with their respective staffs to ensure that their requests were timely, cost-effective, and especially in times like these where cost of goods is through the roof. We went through a dozen or more individual budget meetings within a five-day period, so it was a very, very busy week. And I believe that it's important for me to understand each and every request and what those mean to the department and to the city before actually putting them in the proposal you'll see tonight. I have to add, the Finance Department, including Robert, Melody, Cammy, Melanie deserve a special thanks for putting in all the proposals, the revisions, and the final budget, which I believe, is that going to be handed out to them, or is it already at their?
No, we haven't.
You haven't? Okay, okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure.
We have.
I know we've done it both ways before, so.
We did have it.
Okay.
Bob's keeping it secret.
But, so, sure. So, but again, thanks to them. Their fiscal review of the proposed budget and subsequent recommendations are beyond helpful when coming to the council for the initial presentation, and we certainly have, you guys have a task in front of you over the next month of reviewing it yourselves. And, and of course, J.J., thank you so much for all of your help, for scheduling each of those meetings and sitting through those, taking notes, and just being a shoulder to cry on when, when needed. We believe we have a strong budget to present to you tonight, and there are several items that will be discussed during the budget hearings that, that are already scheduled that we'll discuss a little bit later. But without further delay, we'll get into the proposed budget. Brian, if you want to go to the next page, the first page, I guess. So you can see some of the highlights. I'm going to try and stand a little bit closer so I can see them. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the highlights, payroll is budgeted with merit increases of about three hundred and five thousand dollars. This is before taxes and pension. There's also an estimated five percent increase for insurance and the L G H I B premiums, with the city paying one hundred percent of that cost increase at a yearly cost of just under two hundred thousand. The mayor's budget does not have money allocated for an annual bonus, but if you looked on the, I believe it's on the committee referral agenda, there is a request in there to be made to council to consider before year-end, depending on whether there is a surplus. The city's pension factor is at sixteen point three-nine percent at a cost of three point seven million for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three. And my budget does include a five percent COLA at an approximate cost of one point two million dollars. That's before taxes, workers' compensation, and pension. If you look at the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act budget for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three, some of the major projects that we will be doing using, utilizing those funds will be creek wall repairs. That's something that we have come to find out. Again, you'll, you'll see it in any of the areas where you have creek walls. They don't let you know that it's coming. It just happens, and something has to be done with it ASAP, so it's good to have money inside that budget for, for those particular repairs. For a video truck, for sewer infrastructure recording, that's two hundred thousand dollars. That's something right now that we are farming out, and we're having to do it on a regular basis because everybody around us is dealing with flooding issues. So that's something that we think will be very, very beneficial for us to be able to go out and monitor, because with everybody having the issues, it takes a while for those trucks to become available to us, so it just makes a lot more sense. And again, we'll get into a lot more details and stuff inside the budget hearings. And then sewer and storm drain is one point three million dollars. The general obligation warrant construction fund for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, which is Fund twenty-six, you can see the Greenway Two construction there at one point eight million dollars. You have the I sixty-five Diamond Interchange at two point eight. That's again, fully funded so that we know that the money is there completely, depending on when the project starts. We'll have to pay it in two separate years, but we want to go ahead and allocate all of those funds so we know that the project is completely paid for when the time comes. And then Green Springs revitalization, this is the bid alternative and connector, the estimated price along with, I'm sorry, that is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is the piece of Green Springs that goes from Broadway down to Lake Shore on the eastern side. And then the, I'm sorry, Brian, go back one more, and the Reece Street sidewalk, the three hundred and thirty should be over there under the amounts, but that's all right. So the total budgeted revenues for the general fund, you can see there, sixty-one million, six hundred and five thousand. Other sources and a reduction of fund balance at one point five, with the total expenditures being just over sixty-three. Capital Projects Fund, total budgeted revenue is two point five million. The other source, reduction of fund balance at two point five as well, bringing the total expenditures to five point two-three-nine. You can see down there at the bottom, the note for the revenue source, the carryover fund balance. We won't have to use that if all of the capital projects that are still unfunded for this year because they haven't been done are not completed in this fiscal year and if council decides to delay funding projects that be, that can be carried over. So that number could change. So some of the capital projects highlights, we have a new fire engine in there at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have the Sanford Pocket Park at two hundred and eighty thousand. And then sidewalk construction and design for three separate projects, one in Del Crest and West Homewood, the Central Avenue, and then Mecca leading up to the middle school. I know you're all familiar with, with all of those. So this is just a budget summary. I won't go through every one of these because it's a lot of numbers, but you can just take a look and see that the, the grand, the grand total down at the bottom, except for the Board of Education Fund, which you'll see on, I think it's the next slide, is just, just under ninety-eight million. And then last, the Board of Education Fund, oh-six, and the B O E Sales Tax and Fund One is a total of about almost twenty-one million dollars. You can see the sales tax number there. That is what we've referred to as the penny, is now generating ten point three million dollars to the schools. So it's fantastic, and we are, we are very happy to do that for, for the wonderful city schools. I believe that's it, Brian. Yeah, so the conclusion, we will distribute the budget. Are they going to get it tonight as they leave?
Yes.
Okay. So they will, you guys will get your books tonight and begin your fun reading until the budget. I believe Walter actually sent a email out today to the Finance Committee, setting all of the budget hearings for like two weeks, is it two weeks away? It's not this week.
It's going to start meeting next week.
Next week. That's what I meant. Sorry. Yeah, so this week there will be no budget hearing meetings, but they will start next week. And then again, depending on whether or not we have a surplus for this year, we'll determine whether or not we have bonuses at the end of the year.
We're having Pop Quest tomorrow morning, Mel.
Pop Quest, sure. I'm sure you will.
I'm all right.
So I know, I know this is very high level, and there will certainly be many questions as we go throughout these, these budget hearings. But again, thank you to everybody that helped put this together, and thank you guys for your future work. I've done it many a time, so I know how painstaking it can be, but it's, it's probably the most important thing that we do here as a city, to make sure that, that we are balanced in, in what we're spending, and I just appreciate all the work that you guys do, and I look forward to seeing you in a week.
Thank you for all your work on it, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. All right.
So you're sending it to Finance, then?
Right. So.
Send it to Finance.
Like you said, unless you just want to approve it.
Special issues.
Don't tell me.
All right. So that will go to Finance. Mr. Jones, you want to tell us about the meetings now, or you want to wait till you're, you can go ahead and tell us now since we're on the subject.
Sure. Yeah. These are, what I typically do, I've sent this out to the Finance Committee, and we'll, I'll hear back from everyone, but we want to start a little bit earlier. Usually we start after Labor Day, but we're going to start next Tuesday with, with a high-level review and revenue general fund, and then go to Thursday, which is September the first. And then Tuesday and Thursday of the next week, we would be meeting, and then we're going to be meeting once a week to, until, and we need to pass it on the twenty-sixth meeting, so we, we just have these meetings interspersed. I need to hear from everyone on Finance to make sure that these dates look good and the times look good. Once we finalize that tomorrow, then we'll send this out to everyone on the council. You always do calendar invites and everything, so.
Do you mind, Mr. Chairman, do you mind me interjecting that on Tuesday, September sixth, we're going to have a planning commission meeting in, in this room at five-thirty? Does that?
I mean, unless.
Yeah. I, I don't know that we'll even need that meeting on the twenty-sixth.
No, no, I'm talking about the September sixth. Tuesday, September sixth.
That's, that's whatever. What is the one?
Planning Commission.
September sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it slated for five to seven. Is that?
Planning Commission will be.
We can have it somewhere else, or what do we have?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Yeah. We'll be in here.
I mean, we're going to be in two separate rooms, but.
Yeah, I know. I was just saying, it's going to have a conflict.
We can move that.
Not to make it about me, but.
Okay.
But I.
But it is.
But I am.
But it, but it really is. What time's the planning commission?
It, well, we, we meet at six in here on the first Tuesday of every.
Maybe we can move that up for that night, so we can do both. I know you want to attend both meetings.
I do. Thank you.
Okay. But those are the proposed dates, and then we'll, we'll get, we'll get it firmed up tomorrow and, and send that out.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Before we go through announcements, remember that even though next week is a fifth Monday, we will be doing committees so that we don't run into a problem on Labor Day. So when you're setting committees, you're setting them for next Monday. So with that, Mr. Gualtney.
Actually, no, I missed this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Are you setting public safety?
I didn't have any new items. Walter, you have my agenda.
I've also, there's one, 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 and public safety.
Table one item, we pass one item out.
There's public hearings that set for the item that they just added to my.
Oh, yeah. You got it. Okay. You got a nuisance item.
Yeah, that's right. I will set public safety for after Finance.
All right.
And that is all.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Gier.
I just, I just want to thank Cale Smith and Nathan Curry from Saint Associates for taking time last week to come out and meet with neighbors on Mecca and look at the new sidewalk design and explain how some of them have complicated yards, and they were real concerned, but they did a great job, and the neighbors really appreciated their time, and so did I. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon.
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton.
I believe, let's see, I know Cale had carried something over a couple times, so we'll set public works after public safety. And then I just wanted to actually thank the Fire Department for their work last week. A neighbor around the corner from us, their house burned down last Wednesday, Thursday on Edgnell. Fortunately, they got out safely along with their dogs. Actually, I believe, from what I was told, the Fire Department told the, the husband that he might have saved the whole house from just going up entirely because he closed the door when he found smoke and fire and seemed to have contained it. But the response time was, was incredible, and I know that they appreciated the outpouring of support from the neighborhood and, and community at large, helping to kind of put pieces together and getting some of the basic necessities back together and supplying a little funding to help with some of that stuff, too. So I think that that, I think that's really it, other than, you know, obviously, we're sad to see Mark and Ashley. Driscoll closed, closed the doors at Ash, and just wanted to make sure that they, they know and understand that the community has really appreciated all that they've done and sacrificed, and just knowing that there are lots of blood, sweat, and tears that they've put into, into the business, and that they are valued members of community, and we look forward to spending time with them as that. And then also excited about the potential growth as a, as a venue for, for overflow with, with another business owner in the, in the area that's proven to do very well over time. So lastly, we've got the back-to-school bash on Saturday, I believe from four to nine officially, before and after probably that time as well, but hopefully it'll be a good time. The, the marching band will be out there at the beginning, so come on out and enjoy. Hopefully the weather will cooperate, so.
That's it. Thank you very much. Mr. Sims.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd just like to, thanks to the mayor and everyone who worked on the budget. Look forward to taking the hard work y'all put together and reviewing that. Look forward to, you know, putting in that work, but I'm thankful for everything y'all have done to get it to this point. And also appreciation for Meg McGlamery for being here this evening, the executive director of the Crisis Center. As we referenced earlier in a, in the meeting, the Saturday is the Just Call Away Five-K, which is going to be in the Patriot Park, West Homewood vicinity. Look it up online. It's not too late to register for the race, or, you know, just show your support for the Crisis Center in any way you so choose to do so. But with a couple of events in West Homewood Saturday, it'd be a good way to start and end your day with both the, just the Call Away Five-K and the, and the school event. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, also, thank you, Mayor, because I know a lot of work was put in so far, and you always provide us a very fair and, and clean budget, and we look forward to, to work, working on it together. I'll, I'll go ahead and, and thank the Finance Committee for, for the time that you're going to spend reviewing everything and the time we're going to spend together up here. We're going to act in a civil way. We're not always going to agree on everything, but I feel like we've always act, acted very, in a civil manner. So I want to continue that. And, and, and one thing I'll just make a quick comment on is that I, I don't remember too long ago that a penny in this city was six to seven million. And now we have, for the first time, surpassed ten million, so I, I mean, really, we should be very proud that, that our, our revenue is, is that, and then also that we're one of the few cities in the state that dedicates money directly to the Board of Education. And we don't say that enough, but, and then we have a lot of employees that we appreciate, but we also have to fund, so it's a, it's a balance that we, that we have. So look forward to that, and Finance will be at five next week.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Smith.
I'll set special issues for after public works. And sad news, former president Peter Wright, his father passed away, and the services are going to be in Tuscaloosa on Wednesday. So just wanted to share that news with everybody. And that is it.
All right. Ms. Nelms.
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus.
All right. Well, I do want to set P and D to follow special issues. I want to, while we're discussing Five-Ks, let everybody put October twenty-second on their calendar for the First Responders Five-K, second annual. Wanted to thank Sanford University for hosting the Battle of Lake Shore on Friday night. It was a blast, and, oh my gosh, that band, y'all. I mean, it is amazing. It was unreal. So that was just really a great event, and it was a perfect night. I also want to thank Commissioner Steve Ammons. He hosted several people from Homewood and from Mountain Brook and from his office, just kind of tackle the panhandling issue that has kind of raised its head, particularly in, I know it's been everywhere, but we've had it in Ward Five. J.J. was there, Captain Ben Sutton, and then Lieutenant Eric Hampton from Homewood P.D., and then Lieutenant Jason Rhodes, and Captain J. Loggins, and Mayor Stuart Welch, and City Manager Sam Gaston from Mountain Brook, and then Steve and Othel Phillips from his office. And we really, I think we put together a really great, multi-pronged effort. We're going to have a summit that Mayor McCloskey is going to be involved in and bring in folks from the Firehouse Shelter, from Brother Bryan, and, you know, just kind of look at it from every way that we can look at it, but it really is an issue right now. It's sort of, you know, front and center throughout the county, and I really just value our relationships that we have in the region because it really is something that we need to come, you know, we couldn't do it alone. So I want to thank Commissioner Ammons for having that meeting, and that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden.
Got the book War and Peace. I'm going to start on the first chapter. Just very quickly, I want to thank the mayor and, and Melody and Robert and their staff in advance for all the work that's been done and will get done on this budget. It is a lot of work with a lot of moving pieces, as the mayor was saying, and, and we get, we get to have a lot of fun hanging out together on the Finance Committee, but I just want to thank them in advance for all the late nights they're going to spend on this.
All right. I'll just echo the thank yous to everybody, and Mayor, J.J., department heads, Robert and Melody. Melie and I were meeting before the meeting, and she started talking, and I lost completely what she was saying. She said, because she was talking so fast. And anytime she gets tired, she talks really fast.